All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Casa Grande City Council meeting. We'll call the meeting to order, and first order of business is our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, so tonight we have Pastor Paul Elgin, our pastor from the First Presbyterian Church. Paul, thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thank you for joining in prayer this evening. It's appropriate, after the 77th anniversary of the D-Day landing in Normandy, that we pray for courage and honor and the things that they displayed for us, and that's a monument for them. May we be as faithful as those who have gone before. Pray with me, please. Dear God, we pray for your grace over our city leaders. We recognize that your grace is sufficient to keep them, and we ask, Father, that through your power, we may be perfect, made perfect, in our weakness. We're all weak. At some time, you have made us human, yet you have made us in your image. So, Lord, let your divine power rest on city leaders in Jesus' name, even when they are insulted, or criticized, or persecuted, that is their weakness, but that's when they are strong in you. And I pray that they won't grow weary of doing good, but that they will reap all the things they strive for, and strive for this city, because your word says that you will give us the strength to persevere. So perseverance, well, thank you for the strength to persevere this last year, a year of struggle, and the reminder of our own weakness if ever there was one. So bless our city and all who serve, all who labor, and all who reside here. May we all know your safety, your health, and your prosperity. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Bob. All right, let the roll call show that all council members are present.
So noted.
Mayor McFarland, regarding the minutes, I move that we approve the city council regular meeting minutes from May 17th, '21, as presented, and accept for the record the Board of Adjustment minutes from March 9th, 2021, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved as presented. Next is Claims Against the City, item D.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated May 12th to June 1st, 2021, as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Claims are approved. Meeting agenda approval. Any changes from staff? Larry?
We have none.
All right, anybody in the council have a change, or? Okay, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the agenda, tonight's agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is item G, Consent Agenda. So all items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anyone who has anything you want to pull off the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, the much anticipated and long awaited opening back up of city council and the very popular public comment section. So this is a point in tonight's meeting when we will open the floor to anyone who would like to speak to your city council, and I want to remind everybody that please keep your comments to three minutes. Also remember that any comments made, the council cannot respond, but we can direct staff to look into a matter and get back to you, since it is not an agendized item. So is there anyone who would like to speak to the council? Please stand and approach the lectern. Please state your name and your address for our records, please.
Walter Tuckey, 10693 North Arapahoe Drive, Casa Grande. My questions, this is my first one, and I don't know if you can ask general questions or not.
You can ask anything you want, but we can't answer your question. So what we'll do is we'll direct staff, or one of us will give you a call back. Is that okay?
Okay. First question, what is going on with the traffic study at Pottebaum and Florence? It's a disaster up there. It's on the evenings, it's just crowded on Florence, but Pottebaum seems to have the equal time for the green lights. I believe that should be changed. The second is senior center, is it open now to regular activities or not? The third one is, where do I get a copy of the city budget? And the pension situation was handled pretty well, but on an ongoing basis, is the city breaking even on these pension obligations every month, or are they accruing additional debt? Fourth one is police training. I read an article in the Casa Grande paper today about some extra training that'll be coming along to help police handle sensitivity things and people with psychological problems. And I'm new to the city, but I like the city. I just want to know when I can get answers to those things. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Rains, when do you think we can get him a list of those answers?
I'll get his cell phone number now, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Walter, we'll get you an answer this week. How's that?
Okay.
And thank you for coming to Casa Grande. Anyone else have, would like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers John McGuire, 1748 North St. Francis Place, for nine more days. You guys, I think everybody in, at the diocese and in the city staff world has heard, after however many years I've been here, I am moving out of Casa Grande next week. I'm only moving four miles out of Casa Grande into Robeson Ranch, but technically, I will not be a city resident anymore. So I did, was very pleased to hear that the public comments were going to open up again tonight, because I wanted to take a moment, it was very nice to see Mayor Jackson here tonight, I got to thank him, I wanted to thank all the past council members who've put up with me over these last 15 years or so, Mary Cordson, Ralph Perella, Carl Montoya, I think that's the only three that aren't here still at this point. All the city staff has been wonderful with all my pestering all this time and putting up with my concerns and comments, and I know that there's not always a fun thing to have somebody like me in the world making your life difficult. So I appreciate all of that in a serious nature. Many of you came and visited me when I was very sick several years ago, and that was very much appreciated. My other half has new friends now that have still her friends today because of who visited with her during that time, so I appreciate all of that. I want to take just one or two more minutes here to say that I have, the thing's not on, so I'm going to just keep going until it goes.
I know, I'm looking at Gloria like you forgot to turn it on.
But no, I will not take more than another minute or so. I want to say that one of the things that I've tried to accomplish, and I will still continue to accomplish, I'll still be working in the city and still be, you know, shopping here and supporting city events and things like that, so it's not like I'm going completely away, but I won't be up here as much, because I won't be a city resident and won't really have that gravitas, for lack of a better word. What's the legal word? Standing, that's it. I want the standing that I currently have, so.
Because we won't care about your vote anymore.
That's right. As if you cared about it anyways. But I appreciate the fact that you let me do things over these years and be part of the city, both outside of the actual city and then on the General Plan Committee, that was very much appreciated. But my, one of my focuses was to represent the 30,000 people that have moved here since 2005. You folks have all been here for quite a while, and you have a lot of influence and a lot of memories about what things were like, and what they, you know, what the people that have been here for a long time have. I tried to represent what the people that have moved here more recently have wanted, not always in perfect alliance with what the people who've been here for 30 and 40 years have wanted. And I appreciate the fact that you've listened to that, and I hope you continue to. One last thing, you're going to talk a lot of budget here tonight, you just talked about spending a lot of money on bonds. I echo everything that was said. We should be more taking advantage of the fact that interest rates are 2.5% to do some of the things that this city has needed to do for quite a while, while we can. I've been preaching this to you, all of you, for a year now, since the rates have been this way. Hopefully, they'll stay this way a little bit more, but there's, the citizens that have moved here in the last 10 or 15 years want some projects completed. They really do. And I've polled on it time and time, time again in my group, the one I did over the weekend, seven to one. Borrowing's okay, get the stuff going. So just keep that in mind, and obviously, like I said, I'm here for you if you ever need anything or any communications out to the people that I talk to, and I appreciate everything for the last 15 years or so, so thank you.
We do appreciate you, John. I was teasing you, you know that, right? All right, is there anyone else? Remember three minutes, and state your name and your address, please.
My name is Marcus Romero, 1678 East Melissa Street, and I'm recently, I was born and raised in Casa Grande. I recently moved back after 10 years away, foreign in the military, and my concern is, I'm all about growth, I'm all about what this city is doing, but my concern is with the youth here, and what are we doing to help them and help not just outside investors bring money in, but local investors, like small businesses and things like that. And I would just like to learn and know if our future 10-year plan has things to help the culture that's already here, like the downtown area, as opposed to just expanding outwards and expanding with foreign investors, if that's going to bring, if it's going to help our culture, or just kind of like end up sort of like the Phoenix Mart did, where it just, I don't want to say an eyesore, because business happens, but that's just my concern. And also with these kids, like he has concerns about the people who just recently moved here. There have been kids growing up in this city with nothing to do, and how are we going to use the budget to fix that and give them some sort of hope and aspirations to actually take pride in this city? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Larry, can we get back with him as well on a couple of the projects that we are working on? And there's some, there may be some potential other opportunities for him to get involved, potentially?
Do you believe you're eligible versus speaking parts? Do you mind if I leave your cell phone?
If you're interested in getting involved.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mike Cruz, I am the Public Information Officer with the Casa Grande Elementary School District, and this evening I wanted to take some time to come and say thank you. On behalf of the Casa Grande Elementary School District, I felt it was imperative that I come out here, since I've had the opportunity to work with each and every single one of you, for the most part, just as our district and the children of this community navigated COVID-19, the pandemic, and all the adversities our community faced. As a school district, I want to say thank you. On behalf of Dr. Gonzalez, our administration, staff, students, we're appreciative of the work you've done. Just to brief the community on what has been done through your actions and dedication to our children, to date, we have served over 300 students and families that were in need of internet connectivity through Internet stipend program put together. In addition, through your hard work and leadership in involving private utilities and utilizing existing resources, we're able to provide vital internet services to the children of this community. All in all, the efforts you have done will immensely impact each and every single one of our children now and years to come. What you did was something not seen by other cities, and that's bridge the digital divide. Collectively, your work has really brought new hope and opportunity to a lot of children that did not have these assets prior to the pandemic. So I'm here today not only to say thank you to the council, the mayor, but more importantly, there was two individuals I wanted to recognize within the city of Casa Grande that went beyond the call of duty, beyond the idea of public servants, people that really followed through, worked hard, and put our vision first as a school district. And I want to thank first Mr. Larry Rains, our city manager. This fine gentleman worked hard collectively throughout the year to listen to us, to let our district, our children, and families express their voice. More importantly, he worked diligently to provide us answers on a prompt basis. He was able to ask, answer questions immediately for us. He was able to be a resource for us and help guide this process. In addition, I'd also like to thank Mackenzie Lecter, who worked hand in hand with Mr. Rains throughout this process, working behind the scenes to be able to help make these initiatives and programs come to fruition. So I stand here as a proud member of this community to say thank you. And on behalf of the Casa Grande Elementary School District, we thank you for your work, the service to the children, to the community, and everything you've done to make this a great place to live, work, and play. And for the gentleman that was just speaking earlier, rest assured, as you get more involved, there's a lot of opportunities here for our children, for the community, that inspire hope. So I want to say thank you all for the time today. We appreciate you. Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Rains. I appreciate that. And on behalf, I'm going to take my school district hat off real quick, and as a taxpayer of this community, as a private citizen, it is the work you're doing that really inspires me. It really encourages me to know that I live in a great city that cares about the residents and that puts the peoples first, and that's what's important. And I thank you all for all the great work you have done. That concludes my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Good timing.
Michael, you made me cry. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, then I will close the floor, and thank everybody for your comments tonight, and if you do require an answer, make sure you get with Mr. Rains and give him your phone number, and we will get back to you, I promise you. All right, next item on our agenda is item I, is I-1, Consider Ordinance Number 3274. Mr. Tice.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This item is a request to approve a professional services contract with Schumacher Associates. The specific task that Schumacher will be providing under this contract is to assist the building department with the review of the various building plans that will be associated with the Lucid Phase Two. Schumacher currently is under contract to provide similar services for the Phase One development that is now wrapped up, and are currently assisting us with the design-build process for the Phase Two work. That contract is set to expire at the end of this month. This new contract would allow Schumacher to continue that work through fiscal year '22. We do have adequate funding for this contract within the Planning and Development Department fiscal '22 budget. As part of this proposal, we did solicit other firms to compete with a statement of qualifications, but Schumacher had the best prior experience, was the best fit for the service needs that we had. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no questions, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance Number 3274, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Schumacher Associates, Inc., for the building plan review for Lucid Phase Two electric vehicle facility, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 3274 as presented. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next item is item two, Consider Ordinance Number 3275.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Combs Construction Company in a base bid amount of $570,000, excuse me, $570,168, with a $85,525 contingency for a total bid not to exceed $655,693. And this project is for Florence Boulevard at Trekkle Intersection Improvements, and this is a, what I consider a Phase Two of this project. As you'll recall, during our pavement preservation project, we resurfaced the pavement south of Florence on Trekkle and restriped that section. This project will expand the intersection width on the north side of Trekkle at Florence, and providing quite a few improvements, two left turn lanes moving south to eastbound movement. It will also be the construction of the, an installation of a new traffic signal, curb, gutter, sidewalk, and driveway improvements at that location. We did solicit bids for this project and had seven firms submit bids, and Combs Construction was determined to be the lowest in responsive, and responsible bidder. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Kevin, I put you on the spot. I know that at one time that was the busiest intersection in our community. Does it still rank in the top five, or do you know?
It's the busiest.
Really? Okay.
So this corridor still is one of our most challenging, so, but cottonwood and Trekkle is the number one now, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Kevin. Seeing no questions, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance Number 3275, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Combs Construction Company, Inc., for Florence Boulevard and Trekkle Road Intersection Improvements, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance Number 3275 as presented. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro, Mayor Pro Tim Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Okay, next item is item I-3, Consider Ordinance Number 3276.
Thank you. Staff is recommending that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a land lease agreement between the city of Casa Grande and Robert Joy for land that lies under Lot Two within the Casa Grande Municipal Airport Private Hangar Lease Plan area. This is very similar to past leases that we have brought forward for consideration by council, and we've negotiated this lease for Lot Two, which will be a 2,310-square-foot aircraft hangar for his use. And this, this lease period is for 40 years. However, I do need to identify one error that was in the documentation that is in front of you this evening. It talks about the square footage price of .35. It's actually going to be .40 a square foot for that first five-year period, and then .5 increase every five years thereafter for that 40-year period. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, is that comparable or in line with the other leases we've got out there?
Yes, these are identical to the other, I think we're up to nine now in that area, and very similar.
Because this is standalone, right? It's by itself?
That's correct. So what they're doing is they're leasing the land plus 20% additional area to build a private hangar. The city accepts a small fee for that land lease, and in return, after 40 years, that asset becomes the city's property. So they have to do the math whether they want to lease a hangar or build one, and this is an option that some, some aircraft owners look to do, so.
Okay. Anybody, yeah.
I'm going to piggyback on yours. How, how do we compare to other airports our size as far as that lease amount? Are we about average to some of the smaller ones?
Yeah, we, we base that off of what other airports do, and the other thing that's important is the FAA has to look at those things and approve those, and these lease agreements have been reviewed and approved. Again, that was, I think, back in '08 or '09 when we actually did this version of the lease.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing no other comments or questions, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance Number 3276, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the lease of Lot Two located Casa Grande Municipal Airport to Robert Joy as identified on the Casa Grande Municipal Airport Private Hangar Lease Area Plan, authorizing the execution of a lease agreement by the city manager.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance Number 3276 as presented.
Second.
Mayor, if I could, just one, one point of clarification, the lease or the ordinance does in the whereas clause reference a .35 per square foot provision.
Can we fix that?
Obviously, we'll be fixing that to .40 to match the presentation given by Director Lewis.
So you want to make, make a motion to approve with recommendation?
Yes, please.
So moved. Second.
All right, so now I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next item is item J, Awards and Commissions. The first item, J-1, is to consider approving the appointment of Celeste Garza to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term to expire on November 7th, 2023. Is Celeste here tonight? There she is. Would you please stand up? So Celeste is volunteering, and I just wanted to say thank you, and we appreciate your willingness to take on a task. The planning and zoning is not an easy board, as you and I have had that conversation. So appreciate your, your willingness to do that, so.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment.
Move to approve the appointment of Celeste Garza to Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, Celeste, you've now been sentenced. And I expect you to keep all those other people on that commission in line. They need some help. No, they do a great job, I'm just, I'm kidding, I shouldn't say that. J-2, Consider Approving the Appointment of Mindy McWhorter Dawkins and Darlene Moberly with Terms to Expire on November 17, 2023, and Michael And Michael Cruz with a term to expire on November 17th, 2025 to the Board of Adjustments. I know Michael's here, is anybody else here? Michael, please stand and be recognized. I just wanted to say thank you for your service, thank you for, you know, for volunteering. These are highly paid jobs and, you know, so don't run out and spend it all at once.
I heard they come with a great benefit package too. And I promise not to make you cry on that board.
Okay, thank you, Michael. And thank you for your service. I'll entertain, entertain a motion to approve the three appointments.
And Mayor, before we move, I really did want to thank all of you because I know several of these people applied for a different position. And I'm happy to see that, you know, we filled one, but we utilized their, you know, their, their interest and their skills to go on to another board. So, and I know there's a couple of people not on this list that applied and I just wanted to thank those people as well because we, I am happy to see that we have new people on the board that, you know, that's not the same names that we've had for, for years. So I really do thank you guys for, you know, putting your name in and dedicating the time and energy to these boards, so, and those that applied. So I hope those that applied, please stay interested, there's always opportunities, so. So thank you for that. But in, so I will go ahead and move to approve the appointments of Mindy McWhorter, Darlene Moberly, and Michael Cruz as presented in this.
Second.
All right, and thank you Lisa for those comments, well, well said. All right, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, J2 is approved appointments. Thank you again to everybody who was appointed tonight. The last is J3, which is consider approving amendments to the Casa Grande Youth Commission with terms to extend through June 30, 2022. Matt, do you want to maybe explain that a little bit?
Yes, Mayor, I would, thank you. So our youth commission is about 17, 16, 17 members on the commission. And so 11 of them are returning this year, which we try to do as some graduate every year. And then we have some with experience and we have room for new people every year. So this year we have 11 returning and six new members coming on. And we're into getting into a legacy program almost now because we have some younger siblings coming on of people that have served in the past, so it's really good to see. And they are excited to go ahead and I, I don't, they didn't come tonight probably because they have much better things to do than listen to us talk about what's going on in the city. But they are very involved in, in, I can't address that. But this is one thing that youth can do in the city to, to help out, we do have programs for them. And so it was started in 2004, so we're one of the oldest commissions in the state. Many thanks to Ms. Donna McBride down here for helping get that started as well. And former councilman Carl Peterson and Mr. Jim Rhodes, who was one of the advisors. And now two of the other volunteer advisors that work with me, or I should say do most of the work and I show up, were former members, past president and secretary of the commission, now are both schoolteachers in our community with the elementary school district. So it's a great program, keeps everything going. And so we're excited to get started. We manage to have meetings most of the year when things were safe, we had our two big fundraisers. But the, the commissioners and the youth and the kids are really looking forward to having some normal fun times this year. So we're excited about that and we're going to have a great commission as always. And so that's about it, Mayor.
Good, thank you, Matt.
Would you like me to read all the names real quick? Do we need to do it?
Yeah, I think so, let's read them into the record.
Yep, so for reappointment, so returning members, we have Delaney Dickey, Gracie Anala, Mia Jackson, Landon Moglia, Alora Lenahan, Iris Moreno, Chloe Torres, Anthony Amato, Ramon Gonzalez, and Tia Ray Lewis. Joining this year as new members, Emma Anala, Ellie Harrow, Phineas Lenahan, Mila Lopez, Alexis O'Neal, and Ellie Wiles. One other thing too is we go all the way from eighth grade up to seniors in high school. So we, and we have a good mix of those now too. So it's really nice to get a lot of representation. And we do public schools, charter schools, and homeschools. So we have a good mix of all those.
Great, thank you, Matt, and thank you for all the work you do.
And thank you to Gloria's department, especially Carla helps a lot with all the organization of appointments and organization of all the paperwork. Thank you Gloria.
You're welcome. And Mr. Mayor, if I may. I am very happy and pleased to acknowledge two of my grandchildren that will be joining the youth commission. Ellie Harrow and Mila Lopez will be part of the youth commission. And they're coming willingly, I didn't force them to come. Really having lots of members of their family being municipal government workers and been employed for many years, they're happy to join and they're excited to be a part of the youth commission and volunteering with the city.
Great, thank you Gloria. Anybody else, any council members have any comments or questions for, more on this issue? All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the appointments to the Casa Grande Youth Commission for the term to extend through the June 30th, 2022 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, tell them all congratulations for us, Matt.
Thank you.
Item K, these are ordinances and resolutions and other matters or subjects requiring action by the council. First item on the section of the agenda is item K. Consider ordinance number 1397.02.16.
Seeing Mayor and Council, staff are requesting that Mayor and Council consider amending the court security fund ordinance. We are not proposing a change in how the fee is actually, the actual amount of the fee. The fee is currently $20. However, we're asking that Mayor and Council consider amending how the fee is actually assessed. Currently, the fee is assessed when a person is, is sentenced to pay a fine. They're not able to pay that fine and they go onto a payment plan. So we have an individual saying, I can't afford to pay my fine, I need payments. And at that time, we're assessing an additional fee. Where if an individual comes in and they're able to pay their fine at the time it's imposed, then they are not assessed the additional fee. Since that ordinance was passed many years ago, the courts have taken a hard look at the way we do, how we process things. And you hear me preaching about fair justice for all. And when you look at this ordinance, it really doesn't look like it is fair justice for all because we're only assessing the fee when a person comes to us and tells us that they are indigent. We are requesting that the fee be assessed to each charge, which essentially means if a person has three charges in one case, they could potentially be assessed the fee three times. And you might ask, well, how is that fair? Before, they would have paid the fee one time, now they are required to pay the fee three times. But just keep in mind that under fair justice for all, we have different tools in the toolbox now, including fine mitigation. So if a person does come in and say, hey, you're charging me this fee three times or how many times, and I really, I'm indigent, I really don't have the ability to pay, they can always come back and ask the court for fine mitigation and we can take a look at their financial situation, what the fees are that we are assessing them and make a decision as to whether we can reduce some of those fees or waive them altogether. This is a request to modify the ordinance, which essentially means that it needs to be read twice and tonight is the first reading. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer any.
Does anybody have any questions? I think that's good Judge, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and we still need to vote on this, all right? So it's a, so I'll call for an ordinance number, please.
Number 1397.02.16, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending section 2.24.170A, court security fee of the city of Casa Grande Municipal Code.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 1397.02.16 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
Next item is K2, which is consider resolution number 5304. This is declaring and adopting the results of our city's general plan election, special election held on May 18th. Gloria, do you have the results from that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Staff is asking that the council canvass the election results of May 18th, 2021, which was held for the city's general plan 2030. We had a total of 33,213 registered voters for this election. We had a total of 6,421 ballots cast for this election. The election results, those voting yes in favor of adoption of the proposed general plan 2030 was 5,558 votes. No, reject the proposed general plan 2030 was 848 ballots. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? All right, seeing.
I do, I do want to add that, you know, on all male ballot, people are still getting used to it, you know, to hold all male ballots. But I can tell you that here at the city, we received two phone calls of voters expressing concerns. So I think overall that all male ballot went very well for the city of Casa Grande.
Well, thank you Gloria, thank you dear and your staff.
And Mayor, I just wanted to comment on the, the committee, the general plan committee. You know, I think, I just wanted to thank all of them, I don't know if anyone is here that was on, I know John is.
John's here.
John's here, but you know, I mean, I, I'm really proud of, of the committee and the outreach and the inclusiveness and with, with our staff and all the, the meetings that they had, public meetings. So I think that helped, you know, when people were asking questions. I know I got quite a few phone calls, people were just confused with the general plan, but I think we did a good job, you know, with the outreach and communicating, so. But just a thank you to the staff, to the mayor and all the committee members for all their time. There was a lot of time dedicated to this, so.
Yeah, it was our PIO office.
Yes, oh absolutely.
And their group did a great job as well trying to get the word out. So thank you to you guys in the crow's nest up there too, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments then? All right, seeing none, then I'll call for a resolution, please.
Resolution number 5304, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, declaring and adopting the results of the city's special election held on May 18th, 2021.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5304 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, the next item on our agenda is consider resolution number 5303, the budget. You're on, Angelie.
She's smiling, so it's going to be good.
I promise you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My presentation tonight will highlight the various aspects or components of the FY22 tentative budget. The budget development process began in January of 2021 and culminated with the city manager's proposed budget presentation to council during the council retreat on May 12th. This budget comes after months of hard work and deliberation between the city manager and his executive leadership team to ensure that the information presented to you this evening reflects a balanced budget that is aligned with the mission, vision of the city and its commitment to the service to its, to its citizens. All right, so as I indicated earlier, we did our best to make sure that our budget aligned with our mission, the vision, and the commitment that the city, council, and the staff have to the citizens of the community of Casa Grande. Highlights of the budget, we're recommending a budget of $298.6 million. That includes transfers and does not include the CFDs. The total, total budget excluding transfers is $281.5 million. FY22 expenditure limitation from the Economic Commission of the Department of Revenue is $248.9 million. I'll pause here for effect. You will notice that the expenditure limitation is below the budget that we're proposing this evening. I will address that in subsequent, in a subsequent slide. This budget maintains current levels of service and where necessary, expanding services that were restricted due to COVID-19, to the COVID-19 pandemic. One great thing about this budget, no increase in primary property tax. The primary property tax levy remains the same as it was in FY, as it is in FY22, $4.3 million, and that is way below the maximum that is required for truth in taxation hearing. This budget provides 68 million for bond, of bond proceeds to pay off the PSPRS unfunded liabilities. It provides 14 million of bond proceeds for capital projects, 3 million bond proceeds for bond issuance costs. This budget also includes merit increases adjusted for the compound class study and provides for eight new positions. Eight vacant positions also are authorized but remain unfunded, so they are zero funded positions. And this budget includes funding of capital improvement projects totaling $70.2 million. Before you is a summary of the estimated revenues and expenditures for fiscal 2022. We're proposing a budget of $281.5 million, which is indicated in that, I don't know whether the pointer works, which is indicated in that green circle. And below in the red circle is $130.6 million. And these are exclusions that would take us to the point where we would not exceed our expenditure limitation, and I will deal with that in a subsequent slide. There we have it. Expenditure limitation comparison. We have a budget of 28.1, we have expenditure limitation of 248.9. We're excluding 100 and, I will round it up, $131 million for total budget within the expenditure limitation of $150.9 million. So we're way below the expenditure limitation. And the exclusions include bond proceeds of 85 million, federal grants of 31.7 million, hoof expenditure of 11.2 million, and airport capital grants of, I would round that up, $3 million. We're looking at the seven year budget comparison. You will notice that our budget keeps climbing. In FY22, we had a budget of $204.8 million. In 2022, in 2021, I'm sorry, we had a budget of $204.8 million. In fiscal 22, we're proposing a budget of $281.5 million. And of course, that includes expenditure of bond proceeds.
Most of that increase is a PSPRS, right?
PSPRS. All right, total available resources. We have available resources including bond proceeds of $362.7 million. And we, we have $101.4 million in capital projects funds. And that's available resources, that includes your, your fund balances and the projected revenues that we anticipate coming in. And particularly for capital projects fund, that also includes a transfer. For debt service funds, we have $83.4 million in resources, which includes projected secondary property tax. Special revenue fund, we have $38.6 million. General fund, $149.5 million, which includes of course, the bond proceeds of 68 million. We have internal service fund with a, with total resources of $7.1 million. Enterprise funds, $37.6 million. dollars. Enterprise funds, thirty-seven point six million dollars in available resources. Available resources, we're providing, providing you with a breakdown of available resources as they relate to fund balance and operating revenue. In general fund, our total available resources, twenty-six of our total available resources, twenty-six percent comes from the fund balance. Of course, that does not necessarily mean that that will be spent. It's just giving you the health of the individual funds. Seventy-four percent of, of that, of the resources come from projected revenues. For the special revenue fund, we have twenty-four percent in fund balance, seventy-six in projected revenues. Debt service fund, fifty-six in fund balance, forty-four in projected revenues. Capital projects fund, seventy-nine in fund balance, twenty-one percent in projected revenues. Enterprise funds, fourteen in fund balance, and the fund balance for the enterprise funds reflect cash balances, just what is available in cash. And eighty-six percent of that is from projected revenues. For internal service fund, we have twenty-seven in fund balance and seventy-three percent in projected revenues. Available resources versus expenditures by fund type. As you can see, in every case, the available resources are way above the projected, the projected revenues for each fund type. Operating revenues. Just revenues minus the fund balances, we have in general, we have in general fund sixty point five million dollars. In special revenue fund, forty-four point five, forty-four point seven million. In debt service, two point three million. In capital projects fund, eighteen point seven million. Enterprise fund, thirty-two point five million. And internal service fund, five point two million dollars. For total anticipated operating revenues of one hundred and sixty, I would round it up, one hundred and sixty-four million dollars. General fund revenue by source, other than property tax and bond proceeds, which would give you a clearer picture of where we really are with the general fund. Anticipated revenues outside of fund balance and outside of the bond proceeds, fifty-six point two million dollars. Twenty-six point four million of that is in local, local sales taxes. Eighteen point six million dollars intergovernmental revenues, which include sales tax, I mean, state sales tax and state income tax. Four point two million in other revenues. Three point seven million in licenses and permits. Charges for services, two point six million, and fines and forfeits, five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Local taxes and intergovernmental revenues. Transaction privilege tax, you would notice that the, in fiscal twenty-one, our projection for our sales taxes is lower than what it is for, for fiscal twenty-two. For the urban revenue tax, and that's state, state revenues, the urban revenue tax is almost the same with fiscal year, between fiscal year twenty-one and fiscal twenty-two. The state shared sales taxes, we have fiscal twenty-two projecting slightly above fiscal twenty-one. Auto in lieu, vehicle license tax, the same, a little, slightly above fiscal twenty-one, we're projecting for twenty-two. And franchise, franchise fees, we're projecting a little more in fiscal twenty-two than we have in fiscal twenty, than we did in fiscal twenty-one. A snapshot of your property tax rates. In fiscal twenty-one, your primary property tax rate was one point zero five nine eight. In fiscal twenty-two, we're projecting property ta, property tax rate of one point zero one four eight. In fiscal twenty-one, for secondary property taxes, we projected, we, the levy was point two seven five two. In fiscal twenty-two, we're projecting point seven zero two for a total of one point five eight five zero. As I indicated earlier, the primary property tax did not increase. The secondary property tax, there is an increase in the rate, and that is because, that is because we have to accommodate the debt service that it will be due in fiscal twenty-two. And the, the property tax levy, as I indicated earlier, for primary property tax, four point two million, and for secondary property tax, two point three million, for a total of six point six million dollars in property taxes. The breakdown of the property tax bill. You will notice to the far right, the city's portion of the property tax bill is only seven percent. As a total of the, the bill that would be sent out to, to residents of the city, only seven percent of what they will pay goes to the city. All right, just a, a quick overview of the general fund and the general fund balance. We're projecting revenues of one hundred and twenty-eight million. And expenditures by department, we're showing a total expenditure of one, of one hundred and thirty-three point six million dollars. Of course, that includes the sixty-eight million of bond proceeds. Our projected surplus is fifty-one, five point one million, a deficit of five point one million dollars in fiscal twenty, twenty-two. We, we're expecting to end fiscal twenty-one with a fund balance of seventy-one million dollars. We're projecting to transfer out to other funds, five million dollars from general fund. And for capital projects, we're projecting to transfer out twelve million dollars. We did not forget to set aside funds for our revenue stabilization fund, and so we have thirty-two point eight million dollars set aside for that and transfers we, between general funds in a total of ten thou, ten thousand dollars. So our excess at the end of the fiscal year, with all of these taken into account, we will end the fiscal year with fifteen point nine million dollars, bearing in mind that thirty-two point eight of, would be set aside for revenue stabilization. So technically, in total, we would be, we're projecting to end the fiscal year with about fifteen, forty, about forty-seven million dollars in fund balance. Expenditures by fund type. General fund, one hundred and thirty-three point six, as I indicated earlier. Special revenue funds, fifty point five million. Debt service, six point nine. Capital projects, fifty-three point two. And that's just for the capital projects fund, not the total capital projects. Enterprise funds, thirty-two point three. And internal service funds, four point nine million dollars. Notable general fund impact. We're giving you a quick overview of the general fund. We're showing for personnel, one hundred and twelve million dollars. And of course, that includes sixty-eight million for their PSPRS bond obligation. Twelve million of that is for contractual services, four point eight million for contingencies and reserves, two point four materials and supplies. We have one point one miscellaneous expenses, one-time expenditures of three, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, and capital outlay of three hundred and sixty-five with eleven thousand proposed program changes. General fund expenditures by service areas. On the public safety, we're projecting to spend thirty-two point eight million dollars. On the general government, we're projecting to spend eighty-two point five million, eighty-two point five million dollars. And that, of course, includes the sixty-eight million dollars of bond proceeds. But that, once we've run all the totals, these expenditures will go against public, public, public safety because they are public safety expenditures. Community services, we're projecting a budget of ten point five million, three point five for contingency, two point eight for planning and development, and one point four million dollars for public works, and that's all on the general fund. Expenditures by service areas, all funds. For public works, seventy-four million dollars, rounded, contingency of three point five. Public safety, sixty-two point, sixty-two point seven million. General government, one hundred and nineteen, of course, sixty-eight of that is, is from general, from bond proceeds. Community services, fourteen point nine, rounded, fifteen million dollars. Planning and development, six point six million. Capital improvement project highlights. As I indicated earlier, we have seventy million dollars of capital improvement projects. Thornton, Thornton Road widening, we're projecting nine point five million dollars for that project. Multiple road improvements of six million. Sewer improvement and expand, expansion of two million. Neighborhood parks and urban trails, one point two million. Streetscape enhancement signals, one point two million. The yard project, two hundred and eighty-one thousand. Evidence Bay expansion, five hundred thousand dollars. Radio replacement for public safety, seventy-two thousand. Vehicle replacement, three point eight million dollars. Landfill machinery and equipment, nine hundred and fifty thousand. Phone network improvement, three hundred thousand. And to replace the fire station, three fire stations, twenty-one million dollars.
And before you leave that screen, I tried to catch you. Larry, that nine million on Thornton, is that our share, or is that if we get PRTA money, we can get reimbursed?
I think, Mr. Mayor, I believe the short answer is yes, both. That is our share. But the, obviously, we are accounting for the expenditures today. If we're successful, PRTA.
If we're successful, okay. Thank you.
And Mayor, on that, if you can go back to the replace the fire stations, what does?
It's on the bottom there.
The twenty-one million. So it is, okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Council, it actually includes a geo-bond package, which can, uh, plan to be replaced by the three in the cash, uh, out of other sources.
Authorized positions by fiscal year. In we, in fiscal year twenty-one, we had authorized position of four hundred and ninety-two point three nine, and of course, that included part-time non-benefited positions. For fiscal year twenty-two, we, we eliminated that from the total number, and so we're projecting four hundred and seventy-one full-time equivalent positions. Eight new, eight positions of the four seventy-one would be new positions. We have eight that are authorized and not funded, all non-sworn, and we are projecting enough funds and FTE capacity for full years' cost for the safer ground positions we fire. Personnel expenditures. Total anticipated personnel costs, rounded forty-nine million, forty-eight point nine million dollars. In general fund, thirty-seven point two. Internal revenue, internal service funds, one point one million. Enterprise funds, seven point eight million. Special revenue funds, two point eight million dollars. Of these totals, we have seven percent for, would go to other benefits costs. Healthcare costs would make up ten percent of that. Retirement would make up twenty-three percent, and wages and salaries, sixty percent of the total cost. Tonight, we're hearing the information for the tentative budget for FY twenty-two. The next meeting, we will have, we would have to publish the tentative budget, property tax levies, and notice of hearings. The first publication will go out on June fifteenth, with the second on June twenty-second. The public hearing on fiscal twenty-two budget and property tax levy will be on June sixth. The special meeting to adopt the budget will be on, sorry, July sixth. The special meeting to adopt the FY twenty-two budget will be on July sixth. The meeting to adopt the property tax levy, the first reading will be on August se, August second, and the final reading will be on August sixteenth. Mayor and council staff is recommending adoption of the FY twenty-two tentative budget per the schedules that were attached to this item, and to direct staff to publish notices for purposes of budget slash tax levy hearing and budget adoption, and to authorize action for contingency expenditures. Do you have, are there any questions?
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
On the property tax levies, I'm looking, secondary property taxes doubled going into next year, and, and why is that?
Members of the council, the council may recall, recall that approximately two fiscal years ago, there was a, a new statute that essentially required, that established the amount of money that can be retained in our fund balance. And so we essentially had a very healthy fund balance in debt service, and we had to actually buy that down. And that, and, and so what transpires is that we did not have to levy the full amount of, of, of debt payments because we were able to use the fund balance. And so that drove the, the tax rate down. And so now we're, we're essentially levying for the amount of debt service that we would have for our geo-bonds that were issued in two thousand and six.
The secondary taxes, I've never seen them jump like that before. Is that?
Yeah.
This is, that's unique. I don't understand still why. And, and then the total is one point two million dollars for total taxes higher than, than the next year. And I think the people are gonna holler and yell about the taxes going up that amount of money.
If you, if you were to go back to fiscal year nineteen, I think you would see that our secondary tax rate was, it would either be eighteen or nine, fiscal year eighteen or nineteen, our secondary tax rate was somewhere in the vicinity of forty-six cents per hundred, I believe. And because of the use of the fund balance, it actually drove the tax rate down on the secondary tax. And, and we're essentially having to levy an amount sufficient to pay the annual debt service in fiscal year twenty-two, driving back up that, that rate. I, I understand the concern, but when the new law came into place and we ended up actually utilizing the fund balance versus collecting that, it, it actually drove that down, and now we're seeing the spike. But I, if you looked in prior years, you would see that the average was higher than the twenty-seven cents that was levied the last two fiscal years.
So you're saying because state law changed, we got punished for having too much fund balance?
I, I, I don't, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Herman, I don't necessarily know that we would use the word punished. Typically, what we would do is hold that fund balance till, until the end of the, of the amortization schedule on that debt and would essentially drive that amount down at one time. But because of the change in the statutes, we ultimately had to drive it down to, and utilize fund balance. It, it, overall, over the amortization life of a bond, it typically, the, the taxpayers essentially are going to pay the same amount. It's just that they're rec, we had to recognize it mid-year, mid, midstream versus the end of the, the end of the term.
And Larry, some of this property tax increase is due to the number of new houses that we've got on the, in town, in our community, correct?
Can you, can you repeat the question, Mr. Mayor?
Well, in other words, I think Mr. Powell's pointing out that the full year twenty-one, property tax total collection were five point three million, and our estimate in full year twenty-two is six point five. Some of that, isn't that driven by growth?
The assessed valuation, Mr. Mayor, is, actually drives the growth, which typically is the assessed value because of the addition of the properties coming onto the tax rolls. It will typically drive your cell, your property tax rates lower if you're levying the same amount of revenue.
The secondary property tax, so basically doubled from twenty-one to twenty-two. From one point one million to two point two point nine seven, and the, and the total property tax levy amount went up another one point two million dollars. And I think we need to look at that.
Well, the, the reason that we're, you're seeing an increase in the secondary property tax levy, the amount of revenues that we're generating, is because we utilized our fund balance the last two years, which essentially meant that we were having to levy less revenue for that current year. And because the fund balance has been depleted, we ultimately are having to increase the tax rate. That's why, again, if you were to look at multiple years, or at the time that we started levying the secondary tax, you would see that that amount would have been higher than the twenty-seven cents per hundred. But we essentially have to levy that in order to pay the debt service on the bonds. The secondary tax is one hundred percent utilized to service the, the debt. The secondary taxes, 100% utilized to service the debt payments on the geo bonds for the projects that were, that have been built. And we can, and Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we can provide the mayor and council with more information related to prior years so that you can see that a little bit, perhaps it'll be more evident at that point.
Bob?
I know it wasn't included in this presentation, but one thing that's always eye-opening is to see the property tax rates in other neighboring communities and how well we fare with that comparison. If you provide additional information, I would ask that you include that as well.
And Mr. Mayor and members of the council, specifically to Mr. Huddleston's point, we can certainly do that. Understand that it will be the data, the tax data for this current year because all of the cities are establishing their new rates as well. And I appreciate the work of the staff here. They did point out that in fiscal year '17, our secondary tax rate was 60 cents. We were levying six, pardon me, Brett. Okay, so again, what we'll do is provide more data over the longer period of time. I think it'll be a better explanation. But essentially, what's driving the reduction the last two years was the use of fund balance that we were ultimately using based on the statutory change in the law to comply with that versus at the end where we would normally drive down the tax rate at the very end by using any of the fund balances, balance to service the debt.
Are the taxpayers going to see an increase on their tax rolls?
Mr. Mayor, based on these levy amounts, the property owners will see an increase in the amount of secondary taxes that they're paying, yes.
I meant total taxes.
Total taxes are going up by 1.2 on property, $1 million from what they were.
That is a total amount that's collected by all taxpayers. And obviously, as the slide pointed out earlier with the breakdown, a lot of what the taxpayers are going to recognize is going to be contingent upon what the other taxing agencies are doing during this budget.
Could we just get a better presentation on that maybe before the next time?
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll provide some more historical data, and I think that the council will see exactly what has transpired.
The tarred feathers is getting heated up out there if it jumps that much. But the, that's a big jump.
Does anybody else have any questions yet? Jeff?
Can you explain the eight unfunded positions? I don't have a grasp of that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Jill and her team are grabbing that information. Typically, we have positions that we are, that we've got on our staff complement. It's been, there are positions that have been approved by the mayor and council in previous budget years. And for a variety of reasons, they could be positions that we have elected not to fund. They're frozen positions. As an example of that, much of what we have done is based on restructuring that we've done within the organization. So a good example of that would be, we previously had a grants manager in our finance department, a grants coordinator in our finance department, and that's been consolidated with our planning and development. And so we have the position on the books, but we essentially elect not to fund it because we don't anticipate filling it. But, and it sounds like, or it looks like, and Jill may have a list of those eight specific positions.
I don't need that, Paulie, I just was curious what.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you go back over, Larry, the funding on the three fire stations?
Yes.
You said one is being funded out of the general carryover fund. And the other, you two, you talk about bonds. Have those bonds been approved or?
Those bonds have not been approved. That would be something that we would actually have to come before council and get your authorization to actually hold a bond election. And so they're, based on the funding mechanisms that staff is recommending as part of this budget, we had anticipated, because of the need to replace Station 503, the immediate need of that, we elected to find an immediate funding source. And so we're using a combination of development impact fees because we anticipate expanding the capacity at the new facility versus what we've had, as well as cash reserves that we've accumulated in some of our designated capital funds. So it's a combination of those two funding sources that would fund the replacement of Station 503. Should the council desire to proceed with replacements of 501 and 502 has been proposed, and ultimately look to pursue geo bond financing to do that, there would need to be action taken by the council. And a bond election would have to be scheduled, which must be done in November, the November of each year. And the voters would actually cast ballots for those two particular projects. To give the mayor and council a little bit of history on the geo bonds, what's transpiring as we speak now is that we wanted to give ourselves budget capacity to have that flexibility. But we also, given the amount of capital projects that we anticipate in the next couple of years, are evaluating a proposal that would potentially request the mayor and council to consider adding additional capital projects to that list and allowing our voters the opportunity to essentially evaluate whether or not they would be supportive of that and be willing to pay a secondary tax to fund those projects.
Just one more. What's the deadline to get it on the November ballot? Isn't it?
The deadline for the 2021 special election would be, would have, in fact, just passed. It was the first part of June. And so we have a year to get it on.
We're looking at 2022.
Our general ballot in 2022.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, then I will call for resolution number.
Resolution number 5303. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting the tentative estimates of the amounts required for the public expense for the city of Casa Grande for fiscal year 2021 through 2022, adopting a tentative budget setting forth the receipts and expenditures the amounts actually levied and the amounts estimated as collectible for the previous fiscal year and the amount proposed to be raised by direct property taxation for the various purposes. And giving notice of the time for hearing taxpayers for adoption, for adopting of the budget and for fixing the tax levy.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for the approval of resolution number 5303 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
No, I vote against this at this point in time until we figure out on the property tax levies.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, we'll move into public meetings and public hearings. We have one public hearing tonight. It is item L1 to consider resolution 5305.
Mayor and council, since fiscal year 2005, city has adopted a consolidated fee and rate schedule that incorporates all department and government functions. The schedule is reviewed and amended if necessary by all applicable departments during the budget process. The fee and rate schedule functions outside the city of Casa Grande municipal code, but is incorporated by reference. Prior to consideration by council, the consolidated fees were posted for more than 60 days on the city website as required by state statute. Notice of intent related to the consolidated fee schedule was posted to the city's website and social media at least 15 days prior to considering the adoption of the fiscal '22 consolidated fee schedule. Fee and rate recommendations are based on cost recovery targets, cost of providing service, and on-market comparisons. All proposed adjustments are designed to more closely recover cost of service while adhering to each program's cost recovery philosophy. Tonight, we would like for council to consider the fee schedule attached to this item for fiscal year 2021, 2022. In addition, the proposed resolution would grant explicit authority to the city manager to allow for the temporary reduction of rates under certain circumstances and to expressly grant authorization for the city to provide for promotional and marketing rates.
Anybody have any questions or comments on the fee schedule? Rate schedule? Mr. Powell? Go ahead, Bob.
I'm looking at it now. Are there any that went up?
Yes, we have some rates, fees on the airport. On the first page.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, on the airport, we have some new fees that are being proposed for emergency operations outside normal working hours, for airport aircraft towing and removal, runway taxi light replacement if there's any damage to that. So there are some fees within that, that are being added and a few increases, but not many.
Okay, yeah. For the most part, they either stayed the same or some were actually reduced, so. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so I will open the podium to the public. Anybody have any comments on the resolution 5305, adopting and declaring public records of certain documents filed for the city clerk? And basically, it's our consolidated fee schedule. Okay, seeing none, then I will close the public hearing, and I will call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5305. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting and declaring as a public records that certain document filed with the city clerk and entitled FY '20, '21 through '22 Consolidated Fee Schedule effective July 1, 2021, authorizing the city manager to provide for the temporary reduction of rates and establishing an effective date.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5305 as presented. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, well, that concludes most of our business tonight, at least for the city council meeting. We do have reports, so I'm going to start to my right. Mr. Huddleston, would you like to go first?
Yeah, very little. Just thank you, Mr. Rains, for updating us on the proposed maintenance and repairs to the city hall grounds. I'm excited to see that and more excited to see it take place. And then, Mayor, you have asked me to participate in Career Day, I think it is, at elementary school on Thursday. So I'm happy to do that, and I'll report back on how that goes.
Great.
That's all.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Powell?
This hasn't been, it's kind of been cluttered with the pandemic and everything else. But the, I don't really have any issues to speak of other than property tax we were talking about. But I was wondering on the, when we go back to the, are we going to talk about the bungalows anymore, or are we done with that?
I believe, and I haven't looked, but I think those have both been, you've already had your readings on that, and it's already been passed.
What's that?
You've already passed that ordinance at the previous meeting.
Well, the only thing I was looking at, it basically said the pedestrian access will occur on main treacle access middle of development. Residents of the bungalows will have to walk to the intersection of Treacle and Cottonwood approximately 500 feet to the south. And I guess they can't go to the north because that's not city property to use the crosswalk on Treacle and access the business in the Safeway Shopping Center. No mid-block pedestrian signal crosswalk is proposed, but there is still one in our amendments that if we need it, we can use it. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Herman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. I participated again in the Budget Finance Economic Development Committee for the League of Cities and Towns, and a good night to speak about it. It's a budget-type amendment that we're proposing to forward to the league to take to the legislature so that because of our expenditure limitations, like example, if we didn't get some bonds in or something, and then we had a big project coming, we needed to bond, and we needed more budget capacity, we could hold these hearings, you know, we're proposing about every quarter, but it'd still be all subject to truth and taxation and the same process we go through for the budget. Just because in this economic climate, you know, there may be a big project that comes in, and they want to move quick, and we need to have that capacity to help that project or to make a sewer line expansion in order to promote growth and something unforeseen. Our staff, our city, I think, does a very good job, as evidenced tonight. We have a lot of room in our budget designated. It's not just for anything, but it's responsibly designated if something should happen. But you never know. So anyway, it's a very interesting process, and we're just going to go forward with that. And then just a thank you to Clarence from Public Works and his crew and the community services guys. They got the new pillars built at the Garden of Sunshine for the youth commission and put the metal, the metal plants grow a lot better over there than the other plants. So we put the metal plant sculptures, and they hold up really well. So those just got installed in the, probably going to have it as part of our new commission coming in, a painting project for those, so a little bonding activity. But I just want to thank those guys for getting it handled for us. And they charge us a very good rate, so thank you to Public Works.
Thank you, thank you, Matt. Mr. Gibbons?
Well, first of all, I'm happy to see people here for our public comments. And so I really thank, you know, Mr. Tucky, you know, thank you for coming today, and Mr. McGuire, and Mr. Zamburu, and Mike Cruz. You know, it's just nice to see people back in with no masks and providing input. Of course, we all really appreciate it, and we're glad you're here and want to learn more and do more for the community. A couple of weeks ago, we had the mayor, I wanted to thank for participating in the Faith Alliance Mayor's Recognition Lunch. We wanted to thank all of those who come and lead us in prayer at all of our council meetings. Not every city council offers that. And so we are very, you know, honored and blessed to be able to do that with, as a council in our community. So, you know, there was a couple of things. I think it was a productive meeting. There was a couple of call to action items on that agenda. And, you know, the Faith Alliance, since we had so many people from the different churches, some of the issues, and I've talked to many of you about, some of the social issues that they're trying to reach out at. One is the overnight shelter program. And we had some really good feedback and interest from the churches to help provide a program where they'll go in and do overnight shelter in the churches. And there was a lot of people interested, Mayor. So afterwards, we had a lot of feedback on some of the churches. We're excited, something we've been working on, you know, the three of us have been working on for a long time. And so we feel we're moving forward on that. And the second thing, I brought it up before, you know, thank you to the Casa Grande Police and Deputy Chief Leos for his participation in, you know, the homeless community. I mean, he's out there and trying to do proactive input, proactive programs to try to reduce some of the, you know, the issues and illnesses and everything that comes with them. And he actually asked for the churches to provide shelter during these peak heat, you know, months that are coming up. He has actually asked some of these churches if they would open their doors and house people, just not overnight, but just come in to cool off and provide water. And we had some positive input from those that participated. So, you know, thank you again. We felt that it was a very productive meeting and a good participation. And thirdly, you know, so many people ask us, you know, what types of restaurants we're getting and grocery stores. And I was so excited today to go to Salad and Go. So for any of you that have not gone or have never heard of a Salad and Go, you know, they're all up in the valley, and I've heard so much about them. And I actually went today, and the line looked long, and it went really fast. And the salads are unbelievable. And the salads are unbelievable, and they're five dollars and seventy-four cents for a really big salad and wraps, and so if you haven't gone, I'm just going to put a plug in for Salad and Go. And I know you guys worked hard on that because that thing came up out of nowhere, it seemed like. It was really fast, and it's just a quality, you know, restaurant or, you know, fast food and a healthy option for us. So, make sure you go. There's my plug for them.
And, you know, to tag on with what Lisa said about the Faith Alliance, I had a interesting conversation with a new resident who has been watching our meetings online, and she had said that she chose a church based on one of, you know, our pastors that had come and leapt in prayer because she wasn't quite sure, and when she saw him here. So, I thought that was kind of neat because they do so much for us, but it really benefits our community. So, if you would pass that along. Just a couple other things. I just want to thank Steve Hardisty and Matt Lindberg. I met with them last week regarding the Lencola and some of the things that are going to be going on there with the Boys and Girls Club, and I was able to answer some questions for local residents. I also attended League of Cities and Towns, the Public Safety Military Affairs and Court Committee. Interesting that some of the communities are trying to take some stuff to the legislature about back-to-work program where they're, they're having people that are retiring from the police department coming back in other areas of the, their local police department. There was some good conversation about that. I was able to meet with Chief McCory about that and have some conversations. So, I lended my opinion.
Okay.
There was only four of us that said no, so, but that was beside the point. We had the Memorial Day ceremony. The mayor and I were there, and it was really nice. Again, they did tribute to David Snyder, which was, was very nice. The mayor did a great job, as always. And then, I do want to say that I talked to Chief, I'm sorry, Mayor Mila from Superior late this afternoon. As you know, that, you know, our thoughts are with them as the fire is in really critical condition. I know that my husband's family had somebody that they took out of Globe. They have evacuated Globe, and it's like a half a mile from her house, and so I was checking on some people that we know up there, and they're doing a terrific job with a horrible situation. So, just our thoughts are with them, and that's it.
Thank you, Donna. Jeff?
Speaking of David Snyder, I would encourage you all to drive by the district office today. They put the new marquee out with his name on it, dedicating the Leadership Center or the district boardroom, and it's got big bold letters on the west side of the wall as well. So, it was really neat to see that and a tribute to a man that gave a lot of service to the school district as well as our city. That's all I have, sir.
Thanks, Jeff. Mr. Powell, you had something you wanted to comment?
I just wanted to say a couple of things to close. John, you can still do what you're doing. You're only five miles, four miles away, and you've actually provided a service that we don't have, and, and you've had a lot of interest with people that read and want to know things, and, and you know what to tell them. And I know you always agree with me, so I think that's a good thing, but the, I just, I just want to thank you and say, don't, don't go away. Just, I mean, you can move, but, but stay with what you're doing because we need that. The second thing, I am honored to see Harold Kitching here tonight. We're going to have minutes that we'll never question anymore.
Well, I'm glad to be back. Doctor said you're getting old, so don't push it. Said you're going to be eighty. I said, God, that makes me a little bit difficult.
It's just the way you live.
That's a good reason to get your vaccination.
There you go. There you, that, you couldn't have said it any better.
There you go.
Thank you, Harold. That leads right into my comments. COVID is still here, so be careful. And to Harold's point, get vaccinated. It doesn't hurt. And they're tracking you by your phone anyway, so it doesn't really matter. Well, I'll end my comment about that one. And if you don't know what I'm talking about, then you haven't been paying attention. I did want to, just to our neighbors, you know, we, we live in a community here, and I, I consider Eloy and Coolidge and Florence and Maricopa part of our community, and Eloy has, has actually been working on this for a while. They're actually having an open house and ribbon cutting for their new Eloy Police Department, which is on June eighteenth at eight o'clock in the morning. So, if anybody wants to attend that, I probably will be there, but it's, it's, it's exciting for Eloy. So, it's great, great for them.
You said the eighteenth or nineteenth?
It is on a Friday, so it's eighteenth, June eighteen, eight o'clock. This week's, this and last week were pretty busy weeks for the city. We had a ton of prospects that we're working with, had a really good meeting today. We've, we've got the city council's breakfast with the city council tomorrow morning, if anybody's going. That's at seven thirty at Chamber of Commerce, and we are going to do some filming. Our PIO and her staff has put together some PTSD PSAs that we're going to do for Fourth of July to try and remind people about illegal fireworks and firing them off at odd times. I've got a couple veterans that, that are war veterans that are going to be with me, so we're going to film some PSAs and remind people about that. So, you'll see that coming out. We do have our Chronic Homeless Coalition meeting this week too, correct, Lisa?
Thursday.
On the tenth at nine thirty? Okay, so we'll have that this week. We're also meeting on our water resource plan, so we're trying to finish that up, put that together. Hopefully have some presentation for, for city council in a study session on Copper Mountain Ranch, which will be part of that, with that water resource plan. And keep your fingers crossed that, I know that the, the voted, the House vote, voted on the budget today twice, and it failed thirty to thirty. So, I think they're going to postpone that budget vote till the Senate comes back Thursday. I think they're back Thursday. So, if you, if you know anybody, please continue to send notes. David Cook helped us today. He was the one holdout. He was the thirty on the no side, so. His, yeah, his town's being evacuated.
His house, yeah.
Yeah, he, he's probably not in a good spot for his house, but anyways, please send him, send him some love and send him, send him a thank you, and, and hopefully he shows up when they vote again. So, from a legislative standpoint, they're trying to widen down, but this budget thing's turned into a battle. The governor is really kind of holding this ground, wanting to give back one point nine billion dollars, which we still owe over a billion dollars to buy, to pay our buildings off for the state, and we want, he wants to give all this money back. So, I say pay your bills, then give your money back. Again, I said COVID-19's still here, so let's be careful. We're still seeing infections. A lot of them are in younger people right now, so that means the older people were smart and got vaccinated. Not saying anything, but I did talk to the hospital, and they're in good shape. They do have about five people or so, five or six that are in the hospital with COVID, so they're, they're very manageable. They also, and there was a big article in the, in the Phoenix Business Journal today that the largest healthcare system in Arizona is hiring eight hundred new nurses, and that largest organization is Banner Health. So, I sent him a little note, and I asked him, I said, so how many are you hiring? He told me forty, forty-ish, with more to come. They just finished their new, their new emergency center. They're rehabbing the, the old emergency center, so it'll be double the size when they get done. He did get approval, thanks to a great meeting we had here in Casa Grande from his senior management to expand and remodel the, the hospital. So, they're going to be spending a lot of money on that hospital. And he said that the added bonus, and I'll quote, "More and more of our folks are choosing to live locally," and he doesn't hate that, so that's a good thing. So, I just thought I'd share that with everybody, and hopefully you'll, we're going to be working on the city hall and city grounds to try and improve the city hall a little bit. There's also a plan to probably redo some of the front because it needs, we need some ADA updates and some other things. There's, there's bricks and uneven pavement and all kinds of stuff out there, so you'll see some changes next six months later or so. Getting a commitment. Okay, you heard it here. All right, that's all I have. We do have our CFDs tonight, so we have four other public meetings that are board meetings. So, if you want to stick around for the CFDs, please feel free. If not, the city council meeting is adjourned.
I did. I was like getting packing up.